Welcome to the hearing of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is David Tarnas, Chair. Representative Greg Takayama, Vice Chair, and our members. Welcome our testifiers here and online. This is Thursday, February 2nd at 2:00 PM. We're here in room 325 at the beautiful State Capitol, and we're also holding this via video conference. For those who are online and those who are here testifying, if you could try to keep your comments to a couple of minutes, that'd be great, and I'll ask you to wrap up after that time. And if you're online, please keep yourself muted and keep your video off while waiting to testify, and then turn it off after your testimony's complete. Please use the chat function on Zoom to communicate with the technical staff only. Don't send me any messages because I won't get them. So just chat only for technical issues. If you disconnect for some reason, just reconnect, and then we'll try to fit you in if you are intending to give testimony. Please, if we have to stop the hearing for whatever reason, we'll reschedule, and we'll let you know and notify you about that. For, if you're on Zoom, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and of course, please conduct yourself with aloha, so we can all get along. So thank you very much, everyone, for being here. This is another hearing where we are considering measures that will help us to improve the way the legislature operates in order to improve public trust in our institution. We've been rattled by some unfortunate incidents that have really shaken the public trust in our institution. This committee is dedicated to make sure we move through legislation, consider the legislation fairly, that would help to bolster our statutory and support for ethical behavior and prevent public corruption. We, yesterday, had hearings of bills from the Campaign Spending Commission. Today, we have bills from the Ethics Commission and from the Elections Office. So grateful for representatives from the Office of Elections and the Ethics Commission being here today. So let's go ahead and get started. First off, we have House Bill 129 relating to recounts. It provides that a mandatory recount shall occur when the difference in votes cast is equal to or less than 100 votes, or one quarter of 1% of the total number of votes cast for the contest, whichever is lesser. And then it establishes a filing deadline for a complaint. And so what I'd like to do is ask, oh, you know, I have to print this out. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Scott Nago, Office of Elections, to come up. Welcome. Thanks for being here. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
So the Office of Elections will stand on its written testimony in support, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Next, we have testimony and support from Janet Mason, League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. The League supports this bill. I was fortunate enough to work as an election observer in the last election. So I think I saw firsthand that the items listed in this bill need to be addressed. I think it's probably just a mistake that the word "larger" rather than the word "lesser" was used in the vote-by-mail recount threshold. And so this bill would take care of that. And regarding the deadline for announcing the recounts, it was very clear that more time is needed to conduct the recounts. As I recall, I was involved in two recounts for relatively small contests, and it was very time-consuming. So if we had a big recount for a large election, allowing five days is important. And finally, those who want to contest the results of the recount should have as much time as people who are filing complaints for other reasons. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We also have received testimony and support in writing from Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Yes, Representative Takayama.
A quick question for the Elections Office. Scott, in your testimony, you cited a recount that was provided for in the 2020 primary election, and you said the difference was 29 votes in the original count. What was, when you recounted, what was the number then?
So, so far, for every recount we've done, the numbers hasn't, I mean, it'll be off by one or two, but that's because of margin of error with people who don't mark their ballot properly. So the instructions are to completely fill in the box. If you don't fill it in all the way, that's where you have your differences, because we don't scan the ballot in the same orientation and use the same machine every time. So that's where you get differences. But if you completely darken in the voting position, it'll read correctly all the time. That's why we have that instruction to completely darken in the voting position, rather than put a check or an X.
Have you ever found it necessary, or, well, necessary to recount by hand?
No. So, the ironic thing is, previously, there was a recount law in Hawaii when they used to do a hand count, but when they migrated to a voting system machine, that's when they did away with the recount statute in the '70s, I believe it was.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Any other questions, members? Representative Ganaden.
How often has this happened in the last, say, two or three elections?
So, recounts went into effect in 2020. In 2020, we had three recounts, and in 2022, we had 11. So we've recounted 14 contests in the past two elections.
In your mind, has this recount process and codifying the process of, you know, looking at 100 votes or less, or one quarter, 1%, increased voters' confidence in your office?
Yeah, I think recounts in itself would increase voters' confidence. It's just, it's just, like, the example we gave for the 2020 election where it was less than 100 votes, but yet the difference was 6%. It still met that 100-vote threshold for a recount, but the percentage-wise was greater. So what we're trying to address with this bill is to not get caught up with all the small contests. So that's why we propose whatever is smaller, less, rather than greater.
Oh, so, I understand now. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Representative Ganaden. Please, Representative Souza, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Nago, thank you for being here. I just had a question as to subsection C. I know that you, it's being changed from 72 hours after the closing of polls until after the, until the fifth business day after the election day. Can you shed some light on that timeframe? My perspective is just that it does take a really long time to even get the final printout, where, you know, there is, all the substantial number of votes have been in, where we can actually even see if this is going to be prompted. So can you just shed some light on that for me? Thank you.
So as you recall, for the 2022 general election, the final results didn't come out till Wednesday evening. So that's, but the 72-hour recount clock started at the close of polls, 7:00 PM, on Tuesday. But we don't, we, we can't start a recount if we're still counting ballots. We don't want to mix in counted and uncounted ballots. That's why we're seeing if you give us more time, because we don't finish counting until, it was well over 24 hours the next day. So we really lose 24 hours of 72 hours right there.
Just a quick follow-up question, Chair. So do you think that it should be five? I guess maybe what my question is, should it be longer? I mean, I understand what you're saying about the timeframe.
You don't want to make it too long, because in a primary election, we still have to meet the 45-day federal deadline to send out ballots for the general. So you don't want to make it too long, because if you extend that, you have to extend the contest for cause and...
Right. It affects everything. Thank you so much.
Representative Ganaden, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. In reading your testimony, I realized your, the example you use is District 30, which I represent, and you note the Republican primary race in which the two Republican candidates were differentiated by 29 ballots, you say here?
29 votes, yes.
Yeah, and I can't believe I'm making this argument, but, you know, a lot of Republicans, they lose the primary and then go on to win the general, or vice versa. So you can, so the, if you're using in this, in your testimony that, you know, that these primary votes are inconsequential, or you say small, I don't think they're small at all.
We're not saying...
Because they could, they lead on to future elect, to the general, and then maybe a future election, you know, it's like, winning one is winning one.
We're not saying that the difference is small. We're saying that the small races where 29 votes equals 6.5%, whereas, it's a small race, so anything under 100, it's going to catch a lot of those, even though you win by a lot, because it's a, it's a smaller race. It doesn't take much to win, but the difference may, the percentage difference is going to be spread out, but it's, the number-wise, if it's under 100, it's just going to trigger a recount.
Just a...
Wait, let me follow up. Rep. Ganaden, anymore?
Absolutely, no.
Okay, you're all set. Rep. Souza, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just another follow-up question from what I asked you previously. What if, by chance, the mandatory recount margin of the 100 votes ends up happening after the fifth day? Like, say if the results really don't come out fully until beyond that five-day period, and then, say, we find out in perhaps the final vote tally that we are within that margin. How do we, how does that work? Because then it's almost like we have to trigger the law retroactively.
So, the recount, so the fifth day would be for the results of the recount, not the results of the election.
Okay.
So we would just have to complete the recount by the fifth day, not finish counting all the ballots for the, for the election.
I guess I'm just confused by the language, because it just, it says by the fifth day, business day after election day, so it's got to be within that timeframe?
So, it's, basically says all mandatory recounts should be completed by the fifth day after the, by the fifth day, not counting of ballots.
Okay. I think I may understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Nago. Next, we have House Bill 130 relating to validation of ballots. It changes the deadline for the validation of ballots following an election. First up, we have Office of Elections in support, Mr. Scott Nago, please proceed.
We'll stand on our written testimony in support, and be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony and support from the League of Women Voters. This is Janet Mason. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. The League stands in support of this measure, and once again, it's based in part on my work as an election observer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we've received two testimonies from individuals in opposition, from Brett Colvis and Amanda Kwikowski. Members, questions? Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? If not, members, any questions? Mr. Nago, if I could ask you to come up? The testimony in opposition says, "Limiting the time County Elections Office have to contact a voter whose mail-in ballot fails signature validation is not conducive to fair elections. And it puts an undue burden on county clerks to contact a voter with sufficient time for them to validate their signature." Could you respond to that?
I don't know what that has, so basically, what this bill is, there's two deadlines in this bill, or the current statute has two deadlines. One is for a voter to fix any deficiencies in their ballot, and the other deadline is for the clerk's office to validate ballots. It just so happens that voters have longer than the clerks have to validate to actually, the deadline for voters to validate happens after the clerks have a deadline to validate ballots. So it kind of makes no sense to... So it kind of makes no sense to be able to fix your ballot, but it won't be counted, because one is five business days, and the other is seven calendar days. And with, like I said, in the holiday, which happens more frequently than not, it pushes out that deadline. So this is just, this is just trying to make those two dates coincide.
Understood. I just wanted to help the public understand what you're proposing. So in fact, you're aligning the two periods of time?
Yes.
So that the Elections Office at the county level and the voters have the same period of time in order to do what they need to do?
Correct.
And so it's, from that information, it is not actually limiting the time of the County Elections Office to do their job at all?
No, it's allowing voters the maximum amount of time they have, as well as the County Elections divisions, to validate ballots for counting.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on. Thanks very much, Mr. Nago. Next, we have House Bill 132 relating to elections. Defines "direct recording electronic voting system," "mark-sense ballot voting system," "mechanical tabulation system," and it amends the definition of electronic voting system to include the mechanical tabulation system and mark-sense ballot voting system. Specifies additional requirements and procedures with which chief elections officer must comply when using an electronic voting system, including procedures for conducting the post-election, pre-certification audit. So for this measure, we have testimony and support from the Office of Elections. Mr. Scott Nago, please proceed. The floor is yours.
We'll stand on our written testimony and support, and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
We will be asking you for more of an explanation on this because of the testimony we've received. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Jamie Detwiler, President of Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. Jamie Detwiler, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon to you, Vice Chair Takayama, and the committee as well. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on behalf of the Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. I also want to add to that, that I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised in Hawaii. So the reasons I've outlined in my testimony, I stand on that written testimony, Chair, but I do want to take some highlights from those points. On point one, I want to emphasize that according to the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, the EAC, audits are conducted to ensure elections are operating accurately and complying with regulations or internal policies to promote voter confidence. And I like what you said in the opening of today's hearing, sir, Chair, that we need to build and keep the trust of our voting public. So thank you for emphasizing that. Point number two speaks to HRS 1642, which basically, we've asked the Office of Elections to comply with the existing HRS on the books. And for me, there's a personal story in this. As you've seen on point number three, addressed mail administration and noncompliance of HRS 16-42. I sent certified mail, as well as walked in the same letter and received a date timestamp on that, and I received back the confirmation of the certified mail received by the clerk. The letter was addressed to Mr. Scott Nago, the Chief Elections Officer, and to this day, I have not heard a response. I've also expressed this concern during the election commission meeting on December 12, and provided that same information, and have not received a response. Just a simple response, perhaps acknowledging that they've received it, and perhaps a status on my request.
Understood.
All I'm asking them to do is to comply.
Thank you. If you could please summarize, we have your testimony in front of us, but if you would please be so kind as to summarize your comments, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in summary, this is going to have a negative impact on the people of Hawaii, irregardless of what party you've identified with. And this has, also has an impact on our freedom and liberty, which is going to be compromised without the proper checks and balances that an audit provides. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Detwiler. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Ralph Kushni. Mr. Kushni, if you're available on Zoom, please proceed.
Yeah, hi, my name is Ralph Kushni. I oppose this bill. Long story short is, when we went to electronic voting machine, we took the counting away from the people of Hawaii, and we're letting a company from Austin, Texas, count our votes. Now, everybody thinks that election observers witnessed the counting, but nobody witnesses the counting of votes. We take our ballots, and they're, they're put into a machine, and the machine does what it does, and it spits out an answer, and it says, "This person's the winner by this much, this person's the loser." And we have no way of knowing that what the machine is telling us is true. The only way that we, that machine has given us an accurate count is by following HRS 1642. And what that says is that we're to randomly pick 10% of the precincts. So on Kauai, we have 16 precincts, we pick two randomly chosen precincts, and we're supposed to hand count the paper ballots. That is the only way you know that, you hand count the paper ballots, and you check faces on the ballot, and you compare it to the precinct results that is posted online. The other method that they're proposing is to use ballot, ballot images are produced by that same company in Austin, Texas. Ballot images can be manipulated. So every part of the audits is controlled by the computer counting companies.
Thank you. If you could please summarize, I appreciate that. Go ahead, please.
So in summary, the people need an accurate and a reliable way to know that what they had voted for is what was reported. We need to hand count the paper ballots. The renaming of teams would only exempt them from the hand counting of the paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Amanda Kwikowski. Ms. Kwikowski, if you're on Zoom, please proceed. Not here, we'll move on. Testimony in opposition from Adriel Lamb. Please proceed, come on up.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your opportunity to testify. I testify in opposition to HB 132. You have my comments in regards to how this does not ensure voter trust in the election systems. I myself was also one of the contested, or the recounted races in the primary 2022. I did follow up with some inquiries on the cast vote records from that, from the race for the entire state. I did receive a copy, the Office of Elections did provide that to me, and I'm grateful for that, and reviewed through 340,159 XML files that they provided to us. I do have an analysis of this here before you, and I note that from the Office of Elections statement, that, you know, humans make errors too, and so we can go with computer errors. Let me review the computer errors or discrepancies I found from this cast vote record. Of the 340,159 XML files, 9,322 of those XML files have a file modification date of January 1, 2022. I'm sure that is not within the window of the election. I have not received any answers on why January 1, 2022 is acceptable as a file modification date for these files. There are 31 batches within these cast vote records that have the same batch numbers within the county. So each county has different number of batches. Honolulu County has 1,296 batches, but there are 15 batches that are duplicated, three batches are triplicated, and that, there's also one batch that is completely missing within the cast vote record. In all, in all these batches, chronologically, they're also out of sequence. I'll provide these records for, these analysis for you, but in some, in Maui County, there are 10 batches, actually batches 1 through 10, that appeared on August 13, after batches 12 through 149 have been already recorded into the system prior to that.
Okay.
At least, within each batch, there are at least 229 missing sequence numbers in these batches.
Okay.
That means batches range from 1 to 373, there's, there's different numbers in there. But there's at least documented 220 that are missing, but we don't know how many more, because batches can be larger than some of what the batch sequence numbers are. So I would like to be assured that, you know, we do have an audit of the paper ballots, and the language in this HB 132 basically says, "We don't need audits," or even hand-counted paper ballots, "because we can trust these electronic systems." These are the errors in electronic systems I have found so far. I was not given a copy of the general election cast vote records, because the Office of Elections claims it was under litigation. So I thank you for, if I can leave this with you.
Certainly, certainly. If you could pass it on to Kalani over here, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Mr. Lamb, appreciate it. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Scott Shadko. Mr. Scott Shadko, if you're on Zoom, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Chair, thank you, Vice Chair. I appreciate you wanting to improve the public trust in our institution. I might have a slightly less sophisticated testimony here than the others, but my point is going to be similar. I'm an average voter, I'm trying to get more involved in the process, knowing and understanding our laws. And I've read this HB 132 several times, and it is not easy to understand. I would like to read this to maybe 10 people on the street and ask them if they know what they think it means. I'm pretty sure that I'd get 10 different answers or 10 confused people. I'll read some terms directly from HB 132. Electronic voting system, direct recording electronic voting system, ballot reading device, automatic tabulating equipment, mechanical tabulation system, automatic tabulation system, optical scanning, digital scanning, mark-sense ballot voting system, similar technology device. Sidebar, I think we could just say count by hand or count by machine. So if someone came up to me on the street and asked me, "What does this mean?", I would say, "Well, I've read this seven times, let me try to summarize." I have a bunch of receipts that I need to add. I buy a copy machine. I copy all the receipts, some copies are perfect, some are a little off-center, some are a little blurry, sometimes I run out of copy machine paper. Anyway, I finish, I add all the numbers from the copies, and from the copies is where I, where I'm going to add the numbers now.
Mr. Shadko, if you could please summarize, that would be great.
Summarizing.
Thank you.
Yes. Someone might say, "Why don't you just add the numbers from the original receipts?", and I would say, "Well, I just paid $1 million for this copy machine." So my point is, to increase our confidence and transparency in our system, we should be trying to simplify, not make things more complicated, and we should have a paper trail of real ballots, not machine or quote, "direct recording electronic voting system-generated ballots." Thank you again for your desire to improve our public trust, and...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Shadko. Next, we have testimony in opposition from James Wallace. Is Mr. James Wallace here today? Nope. Okay. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Junior Tupai. Sir, please proceed.
All right. Mahalo, House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. Thank you to our Chair, Tarnus, and also Vice Chair Takayama, and committee members. I come to testify in strong opposition to HB 132. As Mrs. Detwiler, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Kushni, and countless others will say, I will echo their sentiments. So not belaboring the point, I'll just move on. And one in particular, in regards to Hawaii Revised Statute 16-42, one of the things is to remove random selection of 10% of the precincts to be audited. And if that's going to be pre-selected, it would only become a risk-limiting audit. In that regard, you can pick whatever allotment you can, and you can actually, it's almost like it should be randomized, it should not be pre-selected in advance prior to that auditing. They said everything else, so I will just quote from Article 16, Section 4 of our state constitution. It says, "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Hawaii State Constitution and the United States Constitution. I will faithfully discharge any type of legislation that moves to make more ambiguous and vague the people's rights." To me, that's not remaining in the oath of that, to being faithful to the people. Article 1, Section 2 of our state constitution, "All persons are free by nature and are equal in their inherent and inalienable rights. Among these rights are enjoyment of life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, and the acquiring and possessing of property. For we, the people, those ballots are our property." And again, any legislation that moves to make more ambiguous or vague, or to disallow full disclosure for the people to see the process, it deteriorates our trust in this election process. Let me close this up. I didn't know if my testimony went through, so in summary... Oh, awesome, perfect. "So when the proclivity of those overseeing our elections process are to adjust and restructure the metrics that would ensure full disclosure of election procedures and outcomes, we need to take a step back and realize that the variables in their reasoning for these adjustments may unknowingly suppress what the people are wanting to see, free, fair, and transparent elections. Mahalo and I yield."
Mahalo, Mr. Tupai. Next, we have testimony in writing from 60 people in opposition. And to save time, I'm not going to read all of their names, but we have your testimony, if you're watching, we have your testimony. It was received and distributed to the members, so that they've had the opportunity to review your testimony. And thank you very much for sending in that testimony. That is all the testimony that we've received to date on this. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Gannon first, and then Representative Souza.
Mr. Nago?
If you could bring that microphone right next to you.
Yeah, I'll try to...
Thank you, sir.
Be better about this. In your testimony, you note that, I'm trying to fade, the bottom of your page, one. The reason I'm following up on this is fidelity in our voting system is, you know, a big part of our democracy. We all know what happened in Washington, D.C. on February 6, 2021. When I was sworn in to this building, the building was in full lockdown, there were members of the National Guard, there were people outside holding signs that said, "Stop the seal." I think that there is, you know, a range of opinions regarding voting machines, some of them valid, some of them outright quackery. But that said, I'm trying to follow up on your testimony here to support your office and, and trust in the voting system. So you say that using the voting equipment, the counted ballots can be filtered to the selected precinct, and you to create a hand tally of expected results? Further, we are still able to track and go back to the individual source ballot and do a physical review as necessary? So does that mean you can actually still get the ballots and do a physical review if you, if you have to?
Yes. So when we migrated to elections by mail, we no longer count the ballots, the ballots are no longer segregated by precinct like they were in a polling place model. So in a polling place model, we could just manually audit the ballots as they came back from the precinct, because they'd be all segregated. In an all-mail model, we count the ballots as they come in. So when we do our manual audits, we use the ballot images, because we can electronically segregate them, but we're still manual, we still manually count those images with humans, with eyes, marking it on paper. We just don't use the ballots, we use the images. But with that said, we can always go back to the source document that, of the image of the paper when needed.
So until you're done, you don't destroy those ballots?
No, federal law says we have to, we need to maintain them for 22 months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gannon. Representative Souza, please proceed.
Mr. Nago, do you think that it's problematic that you're using the scanned images to begin with, instead of actually looking at the paper trail? I'm just wondering.
I don't feel it's problematic. I think... I think the fact that we audit it manually by counting the scanned images is no different than the paper. And like I said, we can always go back to that exact, we can tie the scanned images to the exact paper ballot, which we have done in the 2022 elections, to show them that the way they marked this ballot, the exact same mark is this paper ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Members, other questions? A couple of questions, Mr. Nago. This issue about random selection of the 10% of precincts, or some people think they're pre-selected, could you speak to that?
Yeah, that's, so that's an error. It got, the random got taken out. It can't be put back. It should be randomly selected. The 10% should be randomly selected.
So you're suggesting that we need to amend it?
So I'm seeing on page four, line 19, you can get rid of the stricken, a random sample of.
Page four, line 19. Okay. Got it. So just where it is currently struck out, a random sample of, you're suggesting we should keep that in?
Yes.
Okay. The idea that it removes the need to count all races on a ballot, and you select one race or question on the ballot to audit, could you speak to that?
So when you do an audit, you're confirming the results of the election. So we start with one race. We pick the 10% of the precincts. The observers randomly pick the 10% of precincts, and then they also pick a race to begin with. When we audit that race, like when any audit, if it doesn't come out, we'll expand the audit to more contests on the ballot. I mean, the way the system has worked, our audits have come out, so there was not a need to expand the audit further to more contests on the ballot.
Okay. Could you explain, when people write to you and they're, and they get no response, could you speak to that?
You know, a lot of times, we do respond. It's when they start writing the same question over and over again, hoping to get a different response, I mean, we've responded, and we will maintain that original response.
So your policy is to respond to any inquiries the first time?
To any inquiries that are not subject to litigation.
The issue about XML files being modified on a date that was nowhere near the election, could you speak to that?
So, yes. So those, so every image or XML file, every ballot, which is different from the ballot images, but the cast vote record has a date on it, except for the in-person voting. Because as you know, we do have poll watchers at the voter service centers. If they were to see you, for example, voting at a voter service center, if you did vote at a voter service center, note the date and time on that, they could request the cast vote record and see how you voted. Therefore, all in-person cast vote records don't have a date and time. That's why it defaults to the January 1 date. That's to maintain the secrecy of your vote.
What would you say to people who are skeptical about use of ballot images and the fear that they will be compromised, and they're referencing other places where they feel that has been shown? What would you say to folks who are skeptical?
You know, we, the ballot images are not the final thing. We always have the paper backup. And like I said, we can always go back to the paper. If you think the ballot images do not match the paper ballot, we do maintain those paper ballots sealed, and we can always go back to that one-for-one and tell you, and show you that that ballot is what is on that image.
Have you ever found an image that was modified from the original ballot that you compared to?
No.
Okay. And you're talking to other elections officers in other states. Have you heard about that? And if so, what was the reason for the image being modified?
I have not heard of any images being modified. I think if that were the case and it did happen, or if it was proven to happen, I think it'd be a bigger story than, I think we would all heard about it.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Anyone else? Yes, Representative Souza. I've stimulated some other ideas. Go ahead, ask your question.
You have, Chair, thank you. Kind of going off of what Chair Tarnas was saying, I guess, and going to my original question to you, how are you prompted to go and look back at the paper ballots to know that, that you are actually comparing it one-to-one? You know, in my mind, from a legal perspective, it's kind of like the best evidence rule, right? It's like, you want to see the actual best evidence. And to me, that would, in this situation, be the paper ballot to begin with, right? So how would you even know, or would you be prompted to go back to look to see if there is a one-to-one correlation that the scanned images are correct?
So basically, what we do is, we have, as election officials, have full confidence in the image. We don't feel that the images have changed. But we do have official observers who question whether that image has been changed, and they will stop us when we're doing the audit and want to actually see that. It may be marked differently. There may be extraneous marks on it that you could, when you look at the paper ballot, you could see that that's the image. So they'll flag that, and then we'll show it to them, and it's exactly what they see.
Okay. I guess another follow-up question, Chair.
Go ahead, please.
So I guess my hangup with this particular situation is that the, there would have to be a reason to go back to the paper ballot, right? Whether it's a challenge or mistrust of the system. So unless that's actually happening and it's prompted, then essentially, we might not know unless one particular ballot is challenged, or you have to kind of go back and review the process. So that's just where my hangup is. I don't know if you have any comments about that or any response?
You know, these are federally certified voting systems. They are required, we require certification on a federal level. They do have to meet minimum standards. And I mean, you've seen in 2020, if, if a voting, if a company was doing something to change the results of the election, they wouldn't be in business very much longer. So we have the confidence, it's been certified by the federal government. We have, so we have the confidence that the system is counting the way it's supposed to count.
Just one quick question, Chair.
Okay, last one.
Do you think that this serves the purpose of efficiency over transparency? What would your perception of that be?
I think it serves both. Like I said, it allows us to get the results quicker. The longer you take to confirm the results, the more suspicion and doubt in people's trust of those results happen. So it allows us to get it out in a timely manner, as well as, like I said, we can always go back to the paper.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Certainly, thank you. This is an important matter, and there's folks out there that are skeptical about it. So it's okay to have these questions and have this conversation. Mr. Nago, I appreciate your candid responses. Are there any other questions from members? If not, we'll move on. Thanks very much, Mr. Nago. So that concludes the bills that came from the Office of Elections. Now let's move on to those coming from the Ethics Commission. That would be House Bill 134, Making an Appropriation for County Ethics. Provides a one-time grant aid to respective ethics boards of the counties of Kauai, Maui, and Hawaii, and to the Ethics Commission of the sitting county of Honolulu. First up, we have testifying support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, the Executive Director, Robert Harris. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, aloha. My name is Robert Harris, testifying on behalf of the Hawaii State Ethics Commission. The Hawaii State Constitution, as you well know, we are the first state to establish a separate ethics commission and establish the principle that all public officers and employees must exhibit the high standards of ethical conduct. In addition, the constitution established ethics commissions, both at state and county levels, and mandated that we have to create a code of ethics, and elaborated on a number of specific provisions that have to be included in that ethics code. And despite the strong mandate in the constitution, the ethic boards on Kauai, Maui, and Hawaii Island operate with little or no funding. Staff support, as has been reported, is limited to a secretary and an attorney from the County Corporation Council Office, both of whom have responsibilities outside of helping this all-volunteer ethics commission. Considering the numerous public corruption cases at the county level that have been seen, there's evident need for systemic change. The purpose of this measure is intended to create a one-time spark or incentive to ramp up efforts rapidly. Once additional capacity is added, the burden will be on the counties to support these efforts over time. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Happy to be available for questions after.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in writing in support from Judge Daniel Foley, who is the head of the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. And we have testimony in writing in support from the City and County of Honolulu Ethics Commission, Jan Yumane. Testimony in support from Sue Lee Loy, Hawaii County Council member. Testimony in support from Judith Wong, Legal Women Voters. And testimony in support from Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here or online wishing to give testimony on this measure? Seeing none, questions, members? I have a question. Mr. Harris, please come on up. You say it, despite the strong mandate in the Hawaii State Constitution, the ethics boards of Kauai, Maui, and Hawaii Island operate with little or no funding. What is that strong mandate in the Hawaii State Constitution?
Again, I think if you look at the mandate that all public officers and employees must exhibit the high standards of ethical conduct, then the creation of the county ethics commissions in this case, but also state and county. And then the express statement that the ethics commissions have to regulate a code of ethics that includes provisions on gifts, confidential information, use of position, contracts, post-employment, financial disclosure, lobbyist registration, and restrictions. So there's a sort of an express statement that you have to have an ethics commission that is regulating these things, as well as anything else you may add into a code of ethics.
So you could read the Hawaii State Constitution to say that every county should have a, an ethics commission to do this work?
Correct. And so I think the question would be is, you know, are you doing that work effectively, efficiently? And in this situation where we are seeing a number of corruption cases, does the public have confidence that this is happening in an efficient, effective way? We've also added, you know, the inability, if you do not have staff, for example, the inability for a county's ethics mission to offer advice on a daily basis to county employees, to offer training on a daily basis, et cetera. And so the idea is connecting sort of these strong requirements stated in the constitution to serve effectively what we see.
Understood. So with this strong constitutional mandate to the counties to do this, why would we need to spend state money to tell, to support the counties? Why shouldn't they spend county money? We give them the authority to raise their own revenues. So I'm baffled as to why we should spend state money for the counties to do what they're supposed to do.
Sure. And again, I've certainly heard that feedback from others, and I understand the concern. I think effectively, looking at the crisis that we have, this is sort of a unique circumstance, and the public confidence doesn't necessarily distinguish between county and state, essentially looking at government in general. And so there is an urgency to sort of what the problem is. And the second issue is, what powers the state legislature have? You can essentially have a carrot or a stick. There is a proposal also to have a resolution, that's a part of Standards Commission, that is essentially urging the counties to look at this more aggressively, which I'd sort of consider effectively a stick. And then this is intent to try to create a carrot, basically saying, hey, we have to do everything we can to try to resolve this crisis by essentially using every tool we have, which includes the carrot and the stick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions, members? Representative Kong first, and then Representative Takayama.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for your testimony. Real quickly, how much are you looking for per island?
This question was asked in the Senate. We proposed 200,000 per island. However, you know, I'd also sort of invite the counties to identify as well what they think that they would need to get started.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, members? Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 135, Relating to Disclosures of Financial Interests. Establishes that certain candidates shall file disclosures of financial interest no later than 10 days after the nomination filing deadline. Establishes that the unauthorized release of confidential financial disclosure information is subject to Chapter 84 HRS, and amends the fines imposed and procedures relating to disclosures of financial interests. First up, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. This is a housekeeping measure that is not, many of these bills are also part of the Standards Commission bills package. This bill is not, it's a standalone. One of the responsibilities of the Ethics Commission is to collect financial disclosure statements. If a candidate, legislator, or state employee fails to file a financial disclosure statement on time, there are different administrative fines currently in place. One of the purposes of this bill is to create a uniform fine of $50, and if not remedied within 30 days, an additional fine of $250 could be assessed. This makes a fine consistent regardless whether it's a candidate, employee, or legislator. Further, and perhaps maybe most importantly, the statutory language states that the Ethics Commission shall collect an administrative fine for failing to file a financial disclosure statement, which has resulted in situations where thousands of dollars of state money is being spent to pursue a $50 fine. This measure addresses this issue in two ways. First, it greatly simplifies the enforcement process for these types of fines, and moves into a process that's perhaps more analogous to receiving a parking ticket. A fine is imposed, and respondents have an ability to request a hearing, but it's not an automatic condition. Second, this measure adds some degree of discretion to the commission. There may be situations where a decision's made not to pursue a collection effort. In that event, I do have to strongly state, the commission acknowledges that any discretion used would have to be exercised in a consistent and fair manner. We hope you'll support this effort to streamline our current administrative process involving financial disclosure statements, and again, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from Will Curran. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Otherwise, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Harris. House Bill 136, Relating to Legislative Allowance. It requires each chamber of the legislature to post on the legislature's website a report of the legislative allowance expenditures for each member of the respective chamber. First up, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris.
Thank you.
Please come on up so everyone in, online can hear you.
Thank you. We'll stand on our written testimony. I think this bill is fairly self-evident. If you have any questions, obviously happy to answer them.
And your, the bill requests that these be posted on a rolling basis.
Correct.
I want to emphasize that. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, we have testimony and support from Judge Foley. Testimony and support from Judith Wong, Legal Women Voters. And testimony and support from Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? If not, members, any questions? Representative Ganaden, please proceed.
Firstly, thank you for your service and for your submission of these bills and for being here today. Do other states require this sort of, I guess, dashboard of small amounts that, you know, legislators might be spending that are approved?
We have not done a complete state survey. We have seen a couple states have done it, and we've also looked at the City and County of Honolulu that currently does it. Part of the thinking was, the current legislative allowance is around 17,000. I think it's set to go up, and it's a, you know, set based on salary. So salary goes up, the legislative allowance also goes up. So cumulatively, it is actually a relatively significant sum of money. The challenge, obviously, these are public records, but they're not easily, readily accessible currently. So the idea is to try to make them more accessible, again, similar to what the City and County of Honolulu does.
How, how specific are you intending to be on this? Because, you know, are you going to say something like $3,000 on mail to constituents, $5 on Monopua, like $8 on lay? Like, how specific are you going to be here? Do you intend to be?
So currently, whenever a request for reimbursement is submitted, it is kept track of by the relative House, the House of the Senate, and that information currently is public. However, to get access to it is a bit of a chore in order to find it. So the intent is not to create any additional requirements on what is currently recorded, simply to make that information available online for people to see.
Okay. Do you foresee the public protesting things like spending for travel to conferences, which are regularly approved, spending for... are regularly approved, spending for hosting constituents or individuals who come to the Capitol, in part because, you know, we can't go anywhere else, this is the people's house? Do you foresee people getting aggravated by, you know, reviewing these things and then aggrieving their government?
I think currently, some of that occurs already, right? So there certainly is sometimes public review of expenditures, and people will criticize it. I, for one, would argue that if it's being spent in a state purpose, that that's entirely what legislators are supposed to do. And in some regards, I'd sort of encourage the use of it. For example, in choosing to attend a lunch that might be important, useful, meaningful, but rather than having a lobbyist pay for it, using state funds for it may be a preferred approach, right? So there are occasions where, you know, we might sort of actually argue that the use of this is beneficial. However, also, one of the purposes in what we've seen in other states who have adopted it is that sunshine sometimes is also a good filter of when to use it and when not to use it, and it does provide some constraints as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. House Bill 137, relating to lobbyists, requires a statement of expenditures filed with the State Ethics Commission to include information on the identity by bill number, resolution number, budget cost, or program ID, or other identifier, of the legislative or administrative action that was commented on, supported by, or opposed by the person filing the statement during the statement period. First up, we have testimony in support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission. Mr. Harris, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you again, Robert Harris, on behalf of the Hawaii State Ethics Commission. Hawaii's lobbying laws are principally intended to provide transparency around lobbyist activity. This measure furthers that purpose by requiring a specific description of what the lobbyist is engaged on versus simply recording a broad subject area. While we recognize this may put an additional burden on lobbyists, we believe the net benefit to the public greatly outweighs the burden. The commission is committed to updating its online filing system to try to make this proposed new requirement as simple as possible, such as adding drop-down fields or selector buttons for each bill or resolution. So to this end, we are proposing an amendment to make the effective date January 1, 2025, to give us time to bring the new system online, to educate lobbyists, and to try to test it to make sure everything's working well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have written testimony in support from Judge Foley with the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct, written testimony in support from the League of Women Voters, Ms. Judith Wong, and testimony in support from Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? Come on up, Mr. Toyafuku. Please introduce yourself. Proceed.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob Toyafuku, and I'm testifying today as an individual, not for any client. And I'm not specifically opposed to this bill or the amendment that is made, but I wanted to clarify some of the issues, I think, that may come up, and I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Harris as well. And, Mr. Chairman, I started working on testimony, never quite finished it because I had other hearings there too.
But you will submit it.
I will submit it to the vice chair and to you.
Thank you.
Okay. The problem is, what bill will lobbyists need to identify in the report? So one report is due at the end of March for the January, February period? Excuse me. So the bill, as you all know, the current bill says you just check off the subject area. So if I'm dealing with a bill on transportation, and there's a box to check off transportation, that's all I do, right? It's very easy to do that, or if there's no designated area, I will write in the particular area. Here, when you have to identify a bill number, let me just mention, if I can take a moment, you know, it says, if you comment on, and the existing law is supported by or opposed by. So one example is, let's assume I talk to a legislator and merely ask whether or not these bills, and I show him a list, are you going to hear these bills at any time within the next two weeks or whatever? And that's all I really want to ask him. But he or she asks me, are you in support or opposed to the bill? I say, well, I favor these bills. So then, the question is, do I list those bills because I commented on them by saying I support or not? Now, it's clear to me, according to what the intent of this bill is, that if I testify on a bill in support or opposition, I definitely need to put that bill number down. So these are just some of the examples. And then, as you go, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I take another minute? So if I go further, and you amend the bill, say, in judiciary, then do I then have to put down Senate Bill, I mean, House Bill 100 HD1 at some point in time, you know, on a rolling basis? So these are some of the problems. The other thing, and I'll leave there, happy to answer any questions. So there are many lobbyists, or several lobbyists, that have multiple clients. And so on any given session, I may be tracking anywhere from 500 to 1,000 bills, depending on how many clients I have. And then, so the report is going to be loaded down with all sorts of bill numbers, only the bill numbers. There's no indication, right, what it's about?
Yes.
And so I think that's a problem. I understand the need for the ethics, and the commission wanting transparency, but I just wanted to raise some of these concerns that if this bill moves forward, it needs to be clarified somehow. Thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to testify.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Toyafuku. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Questions, members? Mr. Harris, could I ask you to come up? And what is your, you heard, Mr. Toyafuku, who's been around and has worked as a lobbyist for many years? How would you operationalize this and answer those specific questions or concerns?
Sure. So first, let me say it, my door is always open, Mr. Toyafuku, so if you have any specific suggestions or thing, we're happy to work through any ways to try to make this simpler and easier. And we did also proactively reach out to several different nonprofit organizations, in part to try to recognize that they may, in some ways, be the ones most impacted by this, and that they may not have as many of the resources and capacity to try to, you know, operationalize or organize this. So the bill is basically asking stuff that you've lobbied on, and so it does specifically state support, comment, or oppose. I think the intent is essentially say that it's something you're working on. So if you're being paid by a client to lobby on that bill, the intent is to indicate or show that that's what you've done. In addition, if you have multiple clients, each individual client as a lobbying organization is going to show that, you know, the corresponding amount that they've paid you for. It's ideas to serve a ability for the public to see where the flow of money has gone and what was worked on as a result of that. For a situation where a lobbyist has tracked 500 to 1,000 bills and is actively working on those bills, we admit that's going to be a burden to try to toggle through that. I think that's part of the intent, to try to make the online system as easy as possible. But it certainly, we recognize it can be an additional burden. Conversely, though, you can imagine a situation where, say, for example, a pharmaceutical lobbyist indicates they lobbied on something related to health. From a public point of view, it's not terribly illuminating, it's not necessarily something that's really all that useful, particularly if that lobbyist never testified on a written record. You may not really know what that lobbyist did. It's the idea is to try to create a little bit more sunshine in that regard.
Okay. And the question of, if a bill goes through multiple versions, then in the various reporting periods, they would need to note that it's not just HB 1342, it's HB 1342 HD1?
So the intent is to do a snapshot in time. So it would be, again, recognizing variations may happen. You would be recognizing that that's snapshot in time, what you lobbied on. There's nothing indicating that you have to say that you supported it, opposed it, or even what position, just simply you worked on it. So even if variations happen, like amendments or something, that's not something I think we would necessarily track, but simply saying the snapshot in time, you worked on that bill.
So you would just, actually, on your dropdown menu, you envisioned just having the bill number, not the various House or Senate drafts?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And if they were just saying, if they were asked their opinion by a representative, well, what do you think about these bills? That would trigger the requirement that they list all the bills that they commented on? In the hallway, you know, when they're chatting?
I think probably more directly what I'd look at is, did they bill a client for that time, specifically lobbying on behalf of that bill? Right? So part of lobbying is that you're being paid by a client in order to work on that. So that's probably one of the fundamental elements. And then, second, yes, if they're talking to legislature and actually communicating about it, that would be enough to trigger that.
Okay. So if this does, in fact, move through, it sounds like there's going to have to be a lot of back and forth to figure out how to make it work. And lobbyists will need to be in the loop on that. And it's not just the lobbyists, it's the organizations for which they lobby, because they also have to, you're envisioning that they also have to do the same thing?
So currently, what happens is lobbying organizations and lobbyists will file concurrent reports together. So typically, the lobbyist will have more specific information, but the lobbying organization is typically filing in association with that.
Yeah, yeah. Representative Takayama, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you. The question sprang to mind that, in literally reading the language that you propose, although Mr., or whoever the lobbyist is, is required to furnish the bill number, it doesn't require the lobbyist to state whether he was for or against, or what the position was on that bill, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Harris. Next, House Bill 138, relating to mandatory lobbyist training. It requires the State Ethics Commission to establish and administer a lobbyist training course, and makes the lobbyist training course mandatory for all lobbyists. First up, we have testimony in support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris. You have the floor. Please proceed.
Thank you very much for your attention. I feel like I should have a joke or something to liven this up a little bit.
No, it's okay. That's why we hear all these bills together, so we can understand the whole gestalt of what you're proposing.
Well, if you get bored of my voice, I apologize in advance.
Nope.
So thank you. We are in support of this bill. This would require lobbyists to complete a lobbyist training course prior to registering with the commission, and repeat that training at least once every two years. Twenty other jurisdictions have a similar type of training requirement. This measure would help educate organizations and lobbyists about the state lobbyist laws and rules, help ensure greater compliance with the lobbyist registration laws. The commission strongly believes that a mandatory lobbyist training requirement will help strengthen its overall ability to administer and enforce state lobbying laws. In addition, I'd like to add, one thing that we've done very successfully is created a self-directed online training on our web course. We would do so for this with the idea that someone could take it at any time, any place, as long as they had access to the internet.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in writing in support from Judge Foley, and from Judith Wong, League of Women Voters, and Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Seeing none? Let's move on. Next bill, House Bill 139, relating to nepotism prohibits a legislator or public employee from naming, appointing, or hiring a relative for public employment. Prohibits a legislator or public employee from supervising a relative in public employment, and prohibits a legislator or employee from awarding a contract to a relative. First up, we have testimony in support from the Department of Human Resources Development. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Brenna Hashimoto. I am the Director of the Department of Human Resources Development, and we strongly support the intent of this bill, and would just provide a comment that we would recommend that Hani relationships also be addressed in the statute.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could stick around for questions, that'd be great. Thank you so much, Director Hashimoto. Next, we have testimony in support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission. I think we're going to be hearing from Mr. Key Campbell. You have the floor. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnus, Vice Chair Takayama, and members of the committee. My name is Key Campbell. I'm a staff attorney at the State Ethics Commission. The commission strongly supports HB 139 for three reasons. First, the commission has difficulty proving these cases without a bright-line rule. It's tough for the commission to show that an employee took an action to specifically benefit a family member, rather than for some other reason. Second, regardless of the reason, when an employee takes action affecting a family member, it creates the appearance that the employee is doing so solely to benefit that family member, rather than on the basis of merit. That undermines the public's faith in government. Finally, this bill has been narrowly drafted to avoid being overly broad. It does not include volunteers, so families, employees can take action affecting family members, as so long as they are unpaid volunteers. Additionally, it has a good cause exception, for instance, if an agency is having an inability to find qualified personnel. All in all, the commission strongly supports HB 139 because it is necessary to combat corruption and improve confidence in state government. Thank you for allowing the commission a testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have written testimony in support from Judge Foley, from Judith Wong, and Lynn Matasau. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Otherwise, members, questions? I have a question for Director Hashimoto. Please come on up. I'm just curious, are there existing state laws regarding state employment that address nepotism?
No, we would rely on the ethics statutes in addressing any kind of nepotism issue.
Have you ever had, well, it's not like you have a long tenure with D-Herd, but are you familiar with problems in state employment related to nepotism? Is that a common occurrence? Has it happened? Has the work with the Ethics Commission been successful in dealing with it?
I believe so. I've actually been in state government in human resources for over 30 years, in various capacities, all in human resources. And from time to time, there are situations involving employees that have a relationship. And from an HR perspective, we typically try to address that by removing the supervisor from any decision-making. So we would assign somebody else to supervise that individual, they're not involved in the hiring decisions or any kind of employment-related matters, promotions, that sort of thing.
So you have developed a standard of practice that addresses this issue without having a particular statutory language that you follow?
That's correct. Right. We don't have any specific policy. We would just rely on the Ethics Commission, on their statutes, in order to inform how we would proceed, to avoid any conflicts of interest.
Okay. And how do you address the issue of Hani relationships in current practice?
So we have Hani relationships addressed in our collective bargaining agreements. It most often comes up in, when there's a definition of a family member. Typically, when it's either a family leave type of request, we need to define who's eligible, what kinds of situations. Also, for bereavement leave, we define what types of relationships are eligible for funeral leave. And we, there's a little bit of difference between the contracts. I did bring them, if you're curious. The Hawaii Government Employees Association, their contracts just simply refer to Hani as an individual who has become a member of an immediate family through the Hawaiian Hani custom. And the UPW contracts refer to an individual who has become a member of a family through the Hawaiian Hani custom or relationship, and it references the Hawaiian Dictionary Revised and Enlarged, copyright 1986, defines Hani. And I do actually have a copy of that as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Other questions, members? Let me just ask one more question of the Ethics Commission. Thanks, Director Hashimoto. In your experience, how has it been successful with the current practice with state employees and hiring state employees to address nepotism?
Well, so we see this quite a bit. So we have many cases that come through the commission, and basically, the law is not currently equipped to deal with those cases. So currently, the state ethics code only prohibits spouses from working or supervising one another. It does not prohibit relatives from supervising one another. So we see many cases right now where relatives or people that are immediately related are supervising one another, and the commission is unable to show that employment action is being taken specifically to benefit those individuals. So... So, you know, I think this legislation is needed to address those practices. Yeah, if I may respond to the HNAI?
Say again?
If I may respond to the director's comment on HNAI relationships?
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, so on that, I think, you know, we drafted this bill specifically to be narrow and to create a bright-line rule, and we're happy to consult and try to work in HNAI relationships, but the reason it's drafted the way it is, is we wanted to capture household members, which would capture some of that, but we didn't want to, you know, create an overly broad and unworkable approach.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on, thanks very much. Mr. Campbell? Okay, we'll move on to the next bill. House Bill 140 relating to record disposition provides the State Ethics Commission with the discretion to maintain or destroy records of financial disclosure statements beyond the current six-year statutory requirement. Applies retroactively to applicable disclosures that are in the commission's possession and control. First up, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, we'll be hearing from Director Robert Harris. You have the floor, please proceed.
Thank you much, very much, Chair. I would like to point out that this is not a bill that is also in the standards commission, this is a standalone, and again, what I sort of term as a housekeeping measure. The challenge that we've had, we've had a couple different statutes apply to record disposition over time, and so we do have some inconsistency if a legislator's been in office for quite some time, that we have a situation where some records have to be kept, and then we also have the current law, which now requires us after six years to destroy the record, and so there is some inconsistency there, that we've had some difficulty in reconciling. What we are asking for is discretion on when, if, after six years, and we certainly will keep it for six years, whether or not to destroy those records or maintain them. With regards to publicly available records that have already been on the internet, we would likely probably just leave those and not try to destroy them, recognizing that once they're on the internet, it's very difficult to actually take that off. With regards to confidential records, which are not allowed to be shared with anyone, we may simply just try to time it in a way where it's the most efficient, rather than having to take staff off of other tasks and have them focus on destroying records, but we can sort of stage it in a way where, when maybe we're less busy, we can focus on it, and the idea is just to be more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have testimony and writing and opposition from Amanda Kuyakowsky. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? If not, members, questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Harris. House Bill 141 relating to financial disclosures, it requires each state legislator to include within the legislator's disclosures of financial interests the names of certain lobbyists with whom the legislator has a relationship. First up, testimony and support from Hawaii State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris. You have the floor, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for helping me get my steps in today.
Ah, there you go.
So again, we are-
See, you did have a joke.
My six-year-old son has some great jokes, too, that I can bust out if you'd like.
All right, all right.
We are in strong support of this measure, and the intent is to, again, just from a transparency perspective, show perhaps relationships regarding lobbyists and lobbying organizations that currently may not be visible to the public. And we do recognize that this would take some time to update our financial disclosure online software, and so we are also in the situation, asking for a proposed amendment to make the effective date January 1, 2025, in order to give us time to update that system and make sure that it's working effectively, and to train everybody who'd be impacted by it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have written testimony and support from Judge Foley, from Judith Wong, Nancy Cook-Lauer, Will Karan, and Lynn Matasaw. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to our final bill on this agenda, and that is HB 142 relating to gifts from lobbyists. It prohibits lobbyists from making gifts that are prohibited under state ethics law. And we have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris. The floor is yours, please proceed.
Thank you. The Hawaii State Ethics Commission supports HB 142, which imposes the same gifting regulations on lobbyists that are already in place for state employees, legislators, and board members. The intent is to prevent both the giving and receiving of a prohibited gift. The hope is that this will allow the Ethics Commission to educate and work with the lobbyist community, and lessen the number of situations where a legislator or state employee must refuse a prohibited gift. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. And we have written testimony and support from Judge Foley, from Judith Wong, and Lynn Matasaw. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none? Then let's move on into decision-making. We have quorum. Yes, we have quorum. Thank you all, members, for being here. Let's go back up to the top of the agenda. Thanks for making it, everybody, appreciate, members. For those watching, legislators are masters of multitasking. We're trying to be many places at once, so sometimes members are watching the hearing from their office while they're doing other work, in order to try to get all the work done. So, then we call them to come here for decision-making, and so that's what, we're getting people coming in now. Okay, so let's move ahead. We're going to go into decision-making on measures on this agenda. House Bill 129 relating to recounts, I recommend that we pass this as-is. Members, any discussion, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 129 to pass as-is, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Gannon?
Aye.
Representative Holt?
Aye.
Representative Hashimoto?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama? Excuse? Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Mizuno?
Aye.
And Representative Souza?
Aye.
Chair, you motions adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 130 relating to validation of ballots, I would recommend that we pass this out with a House Draft 1, and make some technical amendments, as recommended by House Majority Staff Office. That's my recommendation, members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 130 as amended, noting the presence of all members except for the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to House Bill 132, thank you for the robust discussion on this, I think it was important to do our best to allay the concerns and fears that some residents have about the electronic voting system and the integrity of our voting system. This is very important, that people can trust that the voting process works. So we were able to ask the questions that came in from those who oppose it, and get responses from Mr. Nago, which I think were thorough, and I appreciate that. So, I would like to move forward with House Bill 132, and like to pass out a House Draft 1, which would, on page 4, line 19, where it is proposed to delete the words "a random sample of," and we would actually keep those words in there. So, line 19, page 4, and not delete the words "a random sample of." So what it would read is, "The chief election officer conducts a post-election pre-certification audit of a random sample of not less than 10% of the precincts," et cetera. That's my recommendation. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 132 as amended, noting the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 134, making an appropriation for county ethics. My recommendation is just to keep the discussion going, but I am skeptical about spending state money on, and giving it to the counties, in order to do what the counties are supposed to do anyway. But, with that in mind, I still would like to move this forward with a House Draft 1. I would like to defect the effective date to June 30, 3000. That ensures that this measure, it's indicated that this is not a finished product, and it moves on to finance next. In the Standing Committee report, we will include the appropriations request, which is $200,000 per island. So that's four times 200, that's $800,000 that is being requested. Oh, yes, yes, thank you, yes. It's $200,000 per county, because Maui has more than one island. So, yeah, $200,000 per county, there are four counties, so therefore, it's $800,000 total, is what is being requested here. So it's an HD1, defect the effective date, will include the appropriations request in the Standing Committee report, and we will look forward to hearing the House Concurrent Resolution that is in the Commission on Improvement of Standards of Conduct, which we will hear at a future hearing. So that's my recommendation, members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 134 as amended, noting the presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to House Bill 135 relating to disclosures of financial interests, recommendation is to pass out as-is. Questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 135, passing as-is, noting presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. On House Bill 136, the recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1 on line 11, instead of the word "rolling," I would recommend we put in the word "annual." We're also working within the House in our rules and procedures in order to begin to implement this, but I want to move it forward with that in mind, that at this point, I am confident that we could do it with an annual posting. So line 11, change "rolling" to "annual." So it's a House Draft 1. Questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 136 as amended, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. On House Bill 137, I propose to pass out a House Draft 1 and change the effective date to January 1, 2025, as requested by State Ethics Commission. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 137 as amended, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 138 relating to mandatory lobbyist training, recommendation is to pass out as-is. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 138 as-is, anyone noting presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, House Bill 139 relating to nepotism. I'm concerned about having a statute that tells the legislature what to do. I understand we do have to follow ethics laws and campaign spending laws, but we are currently working on our rule package right now, and amending the rules, where we will address this issue of nepotism in the House, and I understand the Senate has said they would do the same. So, while we're working on that rule package, which should be approved within the next week or two, I would like to defer this measure, so that we can continue to work on the rule package. So that's my recommendation, members, is to defer House Bill 139 at this time. If we want to bring it up later, we can reschedule it to single referral. That means that it's only one committee, for the members of the public, if it's a single referral, it's referred just to this committee, so we have some more time to hear it, and schedule it for hearing if we so decide. But we should be moving forward on the rules package within a week or two, I'm told by Speaker, that should address this issue of nepotism. Okay, thank you, members. Moving on, House Bill 140, my recommendation is to pass it out as-is. Concerns or questions, members? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 140 to pass as-is, noting presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thanks. House Bill 141 relating to financial disclosures, my recommendation is to pass this out with a House Draft 1, make some technical non-substantive amendments, and to change the effective date to January 1, 2025, as requested by the Ethics Commission. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 141 as amended, noting presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Final bill, House Bill 142 relating to gifts from lobbyists, my recommendation is to pass this out as-is. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 142 to pass as-is, noting presence of all members, anyone wishing to vote WR or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for testifying today, and thank you all, members, for being here. We have no further business before this committee, our hearing is adjourned.